Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Good evening and welcome to the May 19th, 2014 Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on May 15th, 2014 to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier News. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud?
Sure. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santifante? And Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley? Mr. Pulsofer?
Here.
Ms. Wasson?
Here.
And Mr. Kent?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Let us rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Given who we have in the audience, I'm going to take the liberty of moving directly into the superintendent's report before we have the mid-year organization meeting. So, Dr. Schiff.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's so wonderful to see so many young faces in the audience tonight. Before we get to the IRun activity, we are very proud and appreciative to receive a donation to Borough Safe. Borough Safe is an organization that helps to raise awareness about suicide and provide supports to family and community members. And tonight, we have the co-chairwoman from Borough Safe here, Ms. Angela Cleveland and Dr. Pat Collantino, if you're available in the audience, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium. They will have an opportunity to introduce Donetta Johnson of the Allegra School, who will present a donation to Board President Tom Kest.
Hi, thank you.
Ms. Cleveland.
I'm Angela Cleveland. I'm a school counselor here at Otten Road. I co-chair Borough Safe with Pat Collantino, who's at the high school. She's the Suicide Prevention Specialist for our district. We are part of a community organization called Borough Safe, which stands for Suicide Awareness for Everyone. And we have some committee members with us tonight. We have Meredith Keller, who's a counselor in town, Kia Bergman, Pastor Tim Wolf, and Donetta Johnson. Borough Safe is a committee comprised of Hillsborough School District staff and Hillsborough Township residents working together to provide suicide awareness and prevention resources to Hillsborough and our surrounding communities. The issue is broader than our schools. We must bring education and awareness to the Hillsborough community at large. Borough Safe's goal is to raise community awareness that suicide is preventable and resources are available. In fact, we have some resources with us tonight over on this table. We have some information packets, we have some window clings and some car magnets. So, please, we encourage you to take these resources and, you know, we're hoping to see the car magnets on all of our cars so that people know that help is available to them. Borough Safe has partnered with My Son, Your Daughter, the Jonah Johnson Youth Scholarship Foundation, and the Allegra School of Music and Arts, which is located here in Hillsborough, on many meaningful activities in our community, including the annual Hillsborough Music Festival held in August, and the annual Borough Safe Forum, which will take place this Saturday, or not this Saturday, Saturday, June 14th, at Hillsborough High School. Dr. Schiff has volunteered to provide opening remarks again this year, and we are grateful for the support of the board and helping to prevent suicide and raise awareness. I would like to introduce Yuri Martyr. He's a board member of the My Son, Your Daughter, the Jonah Johnson Youth Scholarship Fund Foundation, and he's the Communications Director for the Allegra School.
So today is a bit of a celebration that culminates out of another celebration, which is, for those of you who don't know it, the Hillsborough Music Festival. We're so happy to be here to fulfill part of that mission of that wonderful day that we organize every year. The Hillsborough Music Festival is a joint project created by Donetta Bishop Johnson and the Allegra School of Music and Arts in partnership with the Hillsborough Arts Commission. It's in itself, it's a wonderful celebration of art and community and all the people that make this community a great place. It's a big party, it's a lot of celebration, and then embedded in it is lifesaving work and the powerful mission that Borough Safe is so important with us. I'd like to just thank quickly some of our major sponsors who made this event possible and continue to support us. The Princeton Auto Group, Bentley's Fine Jewellers, Applebee's, which allowed us to host the event in their parking lot, Kohl's, Weiss Markets, Dunkin' Donuts, Baskin Robbins, the Finney Federal Credit Union, and then major donations of time and goods from Staples and Corporate Graphics Incorporated and the Valencino Brothers, and then many, many other donors and individuals and musicians who support the event and vendors who came and the entire community who came out in a thousand-plus last year and just had a fantastic time. So, we also want to thank, very special thanks, to Anthony Ferrara and the Township Committee for supporting us. But I just want to close with the major point of today. Certainly for the music festival, our main partner was Borough Safe. They do a lot of other things, and these are very busy people donating their time, and they were our daily partners in planning and carrying out the event. It was not possible without them. So, in addition to the wonderful work that they do and this critical work that they do, they also made this event possible. So, we're very happy today to present them with some support. Donetta will come up and present. And this is Donetta Bishop Johnson and her son, Jordan Johnson.
I'm not just the speaker, I'm the official photographer.
Sorry, I just wanted to add that Mindamagio is also a very important part of Borough Safe. She's just so much a part of us. I can't believe I missed her.
We'd like to thank the Allegra School and all of those who made this very generous donation possible to a very, very important cause. Let's give another big round of applause to all of the people that are involved and those who lead our Borough Safe program. Thank you. Well, we also have many students in the audience also, and maybe if we can pan back so we can actually see them. You can wave to the camera, everybody, because you're going to be on TV tonight. There you go. So, very exciting. Mrs. Jennifer Hobson is here this evening. She's one of our teachers at Hillsborough Elementary School, and she will be sharing with us the IRun program and all that it has to offer. Ms. Hobson.
Good evening. Before I start, I was hoping all the girls and the coaches could sort of come up here and stand behind. And while I'm speaking, we have a slideshow of some of our girls up in the front, so. My name is Jennifer Hobson. I'm a third grade teacher at Hillsborough Elementary School. I am thrilled to be standing up here tonight to represent all the girls and the coaches who are involved in the elementary IRun program. The sea of pink is quite overwhelming. Having taught this program for three years, I can see what a positive impact it can make on a girl. It's not just a running club, but instead, we work hard to build character and self-esteem. Running is just the bonus, as these girls are learning about living a healthy lifestyle. Whether it be learning how to breathe through a yoga class or talking with a nutritionist, we are building the foundation to lead a longer, stronger life. However, it's still amazing to see these girls run a 5K, which will be at the Hillsborough Hop on May 31st, and get to that finish line. I have held hands of girls in coaching them to the end of the race. Also, I have wiped their tears of happiness when they are done while giving them warm hugs. We have noticed moms, dads, grandparents, running with their kids. This pay-it-forward benefit is awesome in motivating their parent to run alongside them and set their own goals. It's truly inspiring, many of which have never run a 5K before. I have chills just remembering these accomplishments, and I know every coach here tonight has experienced these wonderful things as well. On our weekly meetings, the girls are encouraged to meet others who they might not know so well and step outside of their own comfort zone. Mainly, they do activities that can help them be a positive voice inside of their own head and spread it to others around them. We have even created a noise that you can give someone if they're not being positive. It sounds like an annoying buzz sound, and you better be careful, as these girls will even buzz me if they feel like I said something that might bring them down. Maybe my HES girls, you can give them that buzz sound that we do? As you can imagine, it helps to create a positive environment. Their enthusiasm for the program is awesome, and the support from parents is amazing. Unfortunately, right now, IRun at the elementary school is not an official club. Each coach volunteers their time, which is a lot, but they know the benefits are well worth it. Thank you to Dr. Antounis for helping support our program and working hard to try and get this recognized for us. She and Ayman are trying to determine the best way to make this club at the elementary level. Parents have thanked us as well, and we are so fortunate for their support. One recently told me, "Dear Mrs. Hobson, thank you for the valuable guidance," as I see Richa, whose parents are here tonight, "talk about the program. It's not only the program, but it's an opportunity to improve personalities through channelized, focused effort. Thank you for running the program." In closing, we ask for you, the Board of Education, to support and recognize this club for its many wonderful benefits. To help remind you of what we do each week, we're not beyond bribery, and we put some nice shirts out by where you're sitting. Thank you. Those are compliments of the Hillsborough Municipal Alliance. Wear proudly, as we all do, and thank you for having us here tonight. And now, there's a student from the Hillsborough IRun at the middle school, Michaela. She's going to speak.
Good morning. My name is Michaela Nelson, and I attend school at the Hillsborough Middle School. I enjoy IRun because I love jogging, and this is a place where we get to run with our friends and learn our limits for running. Some of the girls from my group say that IRun has given me fitness and courage. Aside from schoolwork, IRun has given me a way to express myself through this program. Another girl says, "During this club, we not only run, but we also try to get to know each other and ourselves better. We share fun stories or just what happened that day. Also, we try new and interesting activities like zumba, yoga, and meditation. I am definitely joining next year." A third girl says, "When I signed up for IRun, I thought we would only be running, but we do so many fun activities and exercises. IRun offers a great fun program and a positive atmosphere that helps kids stay active and healthy." Another girl says, "I love IRun because I get to learn ways to exercise that are fun and non-competitive. I also think more about making healthy choices." Thank you.
The Hillsborough Alliance is a great sponsor of IRun. We have a couple representatives from here tonight, and the girls just want to say one final thing to you all, everybody. What is that, girls?
Come to the Hop on May 31st.
We hope to see you at the Hop. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hobson, and all of the children that participate in the IRun program, as well as all of the coaches. Thank you so much for your time. I ask the Board if we could take a brief five-minute recess?
Sure. Let's take a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back from recess. So, we're going to continue with the meeting with the mid-year organization meeting, and the purpose for this is, historically, when we were in the April election cycle, the first meeting would be a reorganization for both the Board and also for aspects of the district and the running of that. Now that we've moved to November, we've split it up so that what we're going to do today aligns more with the academic year, and then the first meeting or the reorganization meeting with the Board is more for the Board-centric activities. So, we're going to move forward with the mid-year organization meeting. Dr. Schiff, if you want to lead us through that, please.
Thank you. My pleasure. As President Kent indicated, that we are doing our mid-year organization. I'm just going to read through, and if there are any questions on any of them, we'll pick them up at the end as we do our action agenda. So, in terms of what is coming up for the mid-year organization, we have designation of signatories, including general operating, president, vice president, board secretary, school business administrator assistant, secretary assistant, school business administrator, treasurer of school monies. Payroll account will be done through the treasurer of school monies. Payroll agency account, also the treasurer. Section 125 account would be the board secretary, business administrator, or the assistant board secretary, assistant school business administrator. High school athletic account will be signed off by our principal or vice principal, board secretary, school business administrator, or assistant board secretary, assistant school business administrator. Building rental account will be board secretary, school business administrator, or assistant board secretary, assistant school business administrator. Under investments, the board secretary, school business administrator, or assistant board secretary or assistant school business administrator. Are there any questions on signatories? Okay, seeing none. The designation of the official newspaper will be the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier News. The designation of depositories for school funds will be TD Bank, PCN Bank, Bank of America, Amboy National, P-Pac Gladstone, the Providence Bank, JP Morgan Chase Bank. Board auditors will continue to be TM Vrabel and Associates. Board attorney will continue to be Fogarty and Harrah. The architect of record will continue to be Parat Sumjin. Architectural services, we contracts to Energy for America for professional engineering services for monitoring the HVAC system at the high school, middle school, ARRIS, and Amsterdam, as well as Prestige Environmental for the continuing services of Bloomingdale's Building Soil Remediation as mandated by the State of New Jersey. School physicians, we to appoint primary care physicians for the 2014-2015 school year, and appoint James Monica to a Doctor of Athletics for the 2014-2015 school year. Treasurer of school monies for next year will be Nancy Costa. Insurance broker of record will be JR Murray for general liability, and Brown &amp; Brown Benefits Advisors for medical, dental, vision the following school year. Custodian and maintenance management services will be Pritchard Industries for custodial grounds, plant operations, and management and maintenance management services for two years of the three-year contract. School warrants will be authorized by the superintendent, assistant superintendent, school business administrator, and assistant school business administrator. We would ask that the Board, once again, adapt all existing, I'm sorry, adopt all existing Board policies, as well as job descriptions, field trip destinations, school district curriculum. NJSIAA Skyland Conference, adopt the rules for play in those conferences and areas. The affirmative action officer will continue to be Mr. Guy Whitlock. The 504 officer will be the person who will be appointed to either director or interim director of special services. The liaison for homeless students will be Mr. Mahmoud. Board secretary will also be Mr. Mahmoud, and the attendance officer will be Bonnie Curso.
Any questions on those items? Mrs. Haas?
Letter L, school warrants, authorizing superintendent, assistant superintendent, business administrator, and assistant school business administrator. According to our policy, under the duties of the president and vice president, it indicates that the president shall sign all school district warrants as per NJSA 18A:19-1. So, we can't approve all of our policies in the next item if we have the school warrants not being signed by the president.
Mr. Mahmoud?
Yeah, and I think, Mrs. Haas, we, I agree, and I don't have the policy in front of me, but I'm sure you-
I do.
I'm sure you do. We probably will ask that we amend that item to include the Board President. The Board President does sometimes ask the Board Secretary in his, as a delegate, to actually sign off on documents as a delegate of the Board President. So, I wouldn't have a problem recommending that we edit it to include the Board President with the Board Secretary.
I just want the policies to be consistent.
I agree. I agree with that.
Otherwise, we don't need to have policies.
Absolutely. We want to be consistent. I agree, Mrs. Haas.
So, noted, that's for item L?
Yep.
Okay. All right, I'd like to kind of make this formal, so we need to act on it. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items A through V of the mid-year organization meeting, as amended on school warrants.
So moved.
Do you have a second? Any discussion? We had questions.
Just one more.
Yep.
The only item that I picked out, because I was looking through this and seeing if there were any that might better, might serve us better to appoint in January, when the Board is appointed. The only one that I thought might be questioned is Board Secretary. Would it make more sense in future to appoint the Board Secretary? And didn't we, did we not appoint Board Secretary in January? I guess not. But I don't know if anybody else had any thoughts that if it made more sense to appoint the Board Secretary when the Board is elected and seated? I mean, we'll appoint him now. I guess we have to. We don't have any other candidates here. Sorry. You're stuck with it for another year. Just a question for next January, maybe.
Okay. Good, thank you, Mr. Gillette. Okay. Seeing no other discussion, roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santifante? Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley? Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. We're officially organized.
We're officially organized.
Okay. Get to moving on with the meeting. We have correspondence, as is listed in the agenda, and I'll hand it over to Superintendent's Report, Part Two.
Thank you. I do have a few pieces of good news to share with the Board, as well as the community. On May 3rd, Woods Rhodes School first grade student Freddie Gordon attended the Mastis Spell 2014 Junior Spelling Bee in Ashburn, Virginia, with over 90 other students in grades kindergarten through fourth, who entered the Bee. Freddie successfully made it to the fourth round, surpassing all of the other students in K through two. He won first place among all first grade students and made it to the top 15 out of the 68 students who were accepted into the Bee finals. This was Freddie's second year participating in the Junior Spelling Bee. Way to go, Freddie. Onto more spelling bee news. On Friday, May 9th and Saturday, May 10th, the Hillsborough High School Theater performed its spring show, the 25th Annual Putman County Spelling Bee, to a packed house. The show was funny, heartwarming, and also conveyed a few lessons to the audience. From the front of the stage to the back of the house, all the students and staff involved did an amazing job. Let's give them a round of applause. And I'm pleased to report that the Hillsborough High School baseball team had a 4-3 victory over the Ridge Red Devils on Monday, May 12th, to capture the county championship at the TD Bank Ballpark. This is the Raider's second title in three seasons. Congratulations to both players and coaches alike. I am also pleased to announce that this evening, that Hillsborough Middle School eighth grader Camille Atchinson was one of 53 middle and high school students from Somerset and Hunter Counties honored at the 24th Annual Paul Robeson Youth Achievement Award Ceremony. The award, the awards are given in the four areas in which Mr. Robson excelled: scholarship, the arts, community service, and athletics. Camille was honored for her dedication to community service. And finally, I'm pleased to announce that Hillsborough Middle School's seventh grade social studies teacher, Jennifer Harmson, has been selected for the New Jersey Teacher Advisory Panel. This is a group of extraordinary teachers from around the state selected to serve as an advisory group to the New Jersey Department of Education. This panel will provide input to the department regarding the implementation of initiatives, share insight on current educational topics, and help problem-solve some of the issues facing today's educators and policymakers. My congratulations go out to Jen for this honor. I know she will serve our students and staff well as a member of this prestigious panel. Congratulations, Jennifer Harmson.
Continuing on in the agenda with the approval of minutes, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the May 12th, 2014 executive session minutes.
So moved.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Abstaining?
You abstain?
Yep.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the May 12th, 2014 public meeting minutes.
So moved.
Chris?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Abstaining?
Okay.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
Okay, committee reports. Let's start first with education. Mrs. Haas?
Dr. Wasson?
Nope. Dr. Wasson?
So, you have the joy of listening to me instead of Judy croaking today. So, we met on Thursday, May 15th, and we just, we had a very long meeting, as usual. We talked about some very important things, one of which is the foreign language Phase Three implementation. So, right now, we're in Phase Two, which seems to be going very well, and Phase Three would begin next year with introduction of Mandarin Chinese II at the middle school and also at the, at the high school levels. We also looked at some enrollment numbers, which are tentative, but those will be used to determine the number of sections at each school level for next year and whether or not we need to hire any staff, which it does look like we will hire at least some Mandarin Chinese staff. We also had a report on the Common Assessment Tool. As you know, as part of the budget discussions, the statistician position is no longer there, so we're shifting those positions around so that we still have the cat in place and can be, that can still be used. There will be a report on the one-to-one technology implementation coming up that will come to the Education Committee first and then the full Board, I believe. We talked a bit about a couple of new unfunded mandates on mentoring and also monitoring requirements that we will have to be part of, even though they're not providing any funding for that, which is getting to be more and more of the norm. We also discussed the position of the fine arts supervisor, fine arts and fine and performing arts, as did the HR Committee previously, and we discussed the possible expansion of that position to include gifted and talented components of the arts, and what seemed to be in, I think, sync with where the HR Committee is there. We talked about the Robo-Raiders, which I don't think there's a representative here tonight, but as everybody here knows, they've been requesting, and Jack Chittarelli has requested that we fund them, and so Dr. Schiff presented an idea about recognizing them as an academic club, in which case, we would, we would be able to fund in-state registration- case we would, we would be able to fund in-state registration fees and transportation. And that would be about up to $7,500, I think we discussed. So that is an option for us to consider in that. And that, I think, is about, is about it. Couple more smaller items, but, oh, curriculum, not a smaller item. Sorry. We also discussed and recommended the English Transitions curriculum for ninth through 12th grade, which I think is on the agendas tonight for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wasson.
Operations committee did not meet.
HR committee also did not meet.
Okay.
A week and a half ago, for last week's meeting.
And then Governance Committee did not meet. Now I'd like to, any questions with regard to the education committee report? Okay. Like to open the floor up to the public for comments from the board, or I'm sorry, comments from the public. This could be either new business or action agenda. Seeing none. I'll continue on with the action agenda. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you, Mr. Kins. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education: to approve travel and related expenses, to approve the harassment, intimidation, and bullying investigative list, to submit the summer school application for the summer enrichment programs, and submit the application for the ESL Summer Enrichment Program, and approve the school nurses' attendance at an overnight choir/orchestra Disney trip, to approve the submission of the preliminary program plan and budget for the ESEA NCLB fiscal year 2015, and acceptance of the fiscal year 2015 ESEA NCLB program plan, application and funds, to approve the overnight field trip, and to approve the revised curriculum as reported out of committee.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items A1 through A7 of the action agenda.
A8.
Sorry, A8. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I have just a question on A5, on the timing. This was event that happened even before the last meeting.
Because I asked the same question of Dr. Antunes earlier. This, this item is something that we had approved at an earlier board meeting, the trip, and for the nurse to go. This item is to pay for hours worked outside of normal hours, and since that cannot be paid or approved before the hours actually are worked, that has to be saved for later date. So there actually was an approval of, as part of the trip approval, the nurse's approval was included, and this is just payment for hours worked.
Perfect, thank you. Another question that I have is on item A3 with the summer enrichment program. I noticed that there were some offerings that had multiple teachers, and so just overall, just wanted to understand, there's a lot of, there was a lot of good and interesting offerings, for those of you in the public, take a look. But just overall, how well is, how successful has the program been in the past in terms of how many students served, how many members of the community, and how it's, how it's been for the district?
I know that it's been very widely attended. I don't have the exact numbers here that I can, I can give to you or, or the board, but it is something that our community has come to appreciate and come to expect. During my summer tours of it, I would say well over 100, even goes to 200 kids have, have participated in it. It runs a couple weeks. Some of the teachers actually do a double program there as well, and even some of the board members have had their children participate in it through the years, and may be able to better address it than I.
I can add, I don't know if this gets to your question, Mr. President, but when there are, it's my understanding that when there are two teachers listed for one program, they are sharing that stipend, we're not paying twice, and that's been my, I think that's been the practice ongoing, they share that. I don't know if you want to back me up on that, but that's been the case. I don't know if it's a case in every case. There may be some courses that are very big, an athletics, sports one or something, but that's been, that's how we've done it in the past, if that was part of it.
It is a self, excuse me, it is a self-funded program? It is not a board-funded program?
Mr. Pulcifer?
I can't speak to the most recent couple of years, but historically, this has been a program where we've unfortunately turned people away. I mean, people would get to registration early, because if they didn't, they weren't going to get a spot. So as far as how well-attended, or it's always been very well-attended, so I think, if anything, if we could find a way to do more, I think the public would be, would still fill all those new classes also.
I did notice that some were sold out, so again, for those, those of you interested, check it out before it disappears. Any other discussion on the motion at hand? Okay. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud.
Mr. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Pulcifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the area of human resources: to approve the technology job description, to approve the retirement of Frances Carnes, our transitional primary teacher, who has been with us since 1999, and we appreciate her service to our students. Approve the resignations as listed, the revised leave of absence, and the appointments of substitutes, teachers. Approve the transfer and change in assignments as listed, and approve the renewal of tenured, certificated staff for the following school year, as well as approve the renewal of tenured HPSA administrators for the 2014-2015 school year. Approve the renewal of the HEA office personnel for the 2014-2015. These are the aligned office personnel throughout the district, as well as the aligned clerical assistants throughout the district, B10. Also approve the renewal of custodial and maintenance staff for the following school year, the renewal of transportation drivers, as well as the renewal of unaffiliated staff. Approve the renewal of unaffiliated administrators, approve the student teachers, let's say, salaries for the ELL Summer Enrichment Program, approve the Summer Enrichment Program stipends, to approve the extra period coverage as listed, to approve the payroll specialist contract, to approve the non-tenured HPSA staff, and that's all I have.
I'm actually going to move item B19 to executive session, so I'd like to entertain a motion to items B1 through B20, excluding B19.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay. Any discussion? Again, this is for items B1 through 18 and B20. Okay, seeing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud.
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Pulcifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Continuing on with the action agenda?
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations: to approve the monthly financial reports, monthly bills list, the line honor transfers, to accept the donations, as we, as we saw here today, for $3,000 from the Jonah Johnson Youth Scholarship Fund for Borough Safe, as well as $500 additional dollars from the Allegra School of Music and Arts. We also thank George Feeny for miscellaneous art supplies and fabric for use at the high school. To approve the revisions and bylaws for bylaw 163 quorum, 171 duties of president and vice president, 172 duties of treasurer of school monies, 1100 district organization, and 1120 management team. This is approval of these bylaws and policies for second reading. Approve the award of waste disposal contracts as listed. Approve the resolution awarding the partial roof repair contracts as part of the regular operating district grants, application projects as listed. And that's all I have.
I'd like to entertain a motion for items C1 through C7 of the action agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? On item C7, just want to confirm that's for all three roofs?
Yes, that is for all, for HE, yes, Mr. Kent, that is for, for the high school, the middle school, and Alton Road.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Seeing no other questions or discussion, roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud.
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte? Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Pulcifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Continuing on, any old business from the board? Old business, it's another plug for the Hillsborough Hop, and that's old business because we had all the iRunners here earlier. May 31st, 8:00 AM. It's a, it's a great community and family event. Unfortunately, we don't have the Hoppy Award, but that's, you know, for those of you from, who went to, to school or college in Boston, it's kind of like the Bean Pot, or at least it'll get up to that stage, where bragging rights goes to the school that has the greatest participation as a percentage of, of the participants. I believe that Hoppy currently resides here at ARRIS, so we'll see if they'll be returning champions. And we're actually going to have a number of, in addition to the iRunners, there'll be a couple of school board members running as well, so, and family. So we got three, and associated family as well, so we'll-
Are we in the running for the Hoppy if we get a high enough percentage of the board members?
Let's see, well, we're at 30% right now.
I'm in. I'm good. Talking bragging rights.
We may get an honorable mention. So it's a, it's a funny event also, in addition to the kids, it's an opportunity for, for family teams, fathers, father, daughter, father, son, son, daughter, son, father, the permutation there, so it's, it's a real good time. And again, thanks to all the, all the iRunners who are helping, and the coaches from the schools have been helping, helping the kids do that, so. Any other, any other old business? Okay, I'd like to open it now to the floor for the public, for any public comment? It's the two, two times. Okay, seeing none? Thank you. All right, we're gonna read a motion for executive session. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and the State of New Jersey as follows: "The matters to be discussed are employee, a personnel matter, and the matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists." I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Are we going to be taking action, or is this-
We may take action.
Okay. Does that need to be part of the motion that we're about?
No, we would just inform the public that when we return, we, whether we're, whether we expect to take action or not, we, we may. So we'll take the appropriate steps when we return from executive session. So I heard, I heard it'll be, yeah, it'll be about 20 minutes. So I heard a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we're going to go, motion passes. We're going to go to executive session, and then we'll come back, and we may act or not. Okay, we're back from executive session. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud?
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Pulcifer?
Here.
Ms. Wasson?
Here.
And Mr. Kent?
Here.
Motion passes. We're here.
We have quorum. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item B19 of the action agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud.
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Pulcifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
I don't know, it just happened, yes.
And Mr. Kent?
No.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.